Given by Pastor Carl Vickery, Calvary Tabernacle Church. Pastor, if you'd like to come forward. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for our pledge to the nation's flag.
All right. Good evening. Giving honor to, of course, Mayor Ames and the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to pray over the proceedings of the day. I truly believe we do need the Spirit of God to direct us and guide us and help us as we lead our city. In Jesus' name, Lord, we love you. We come to you today asking for that direction of the Spirit of God to rest upon the proceedings and the proceedings, God, over this meeting. I'm asking you to give the mind of Christ to every council member, to everyone that would be speaking today, God. We pray, Lord, I'm asking you that the faith and the favor of God would rest upon this city and those that are making decisions on behalf of the members of this city. I pray that your wisdom would get a hold of us and your heart would become our heart and that your mind would become our mind. I pray, Lord, lastly, that you would give a spirit of unity on every, Lord, heart, on every mind, that truly the spirit of unity will encompass this city council as they lead this city and make decisions on behalf of the citizens of southeast Texas. I pray the Spirit of God would unite us, Lord, in one mind and one accord and one purpose under one vision. I pray bless these proceedings today. Let your hand be mightily upon us today and let the glory of God be revealed before this day is through, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Vickery.
Thank you.
May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames here. Mayor Pro Tem Page.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We don't have any presentations or proclamations today, so I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on scheduled agenda item one or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you would like to make comment on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip and hand it to the officer. She will bring it to the city clerk and we will call out your name. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you're here to speak on any other item today, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose, but right now it's for the consent agenda or item number one.
I don't have any green slips, Mayor, so I don't think so.
No one? Okay. All right. There appears to be no one. So, council, can I have a... Yes, sir?
May I ask a question at this point?
Certainly.
Mayor, it came to my attention by someone, there is a phone call from a citizen that states that council meetings are not open at this time. Would you kind of give clarity? It is open.
Yeah.
And people can come.
Yeah.
And sit. We have, we just have a limit to the number of people that can come into the council chambers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And anyone, once it gets to the number that's capacity, they will go into the overflow conference room.
Yes.
So, anyone is welcome to come to council chambers as long as they meet that number.
We just can't have them all sitting in here at the same time because of the social distancing requirements as put forth by the governor. And so if someone does want to speak, they just let us know when they get here and they go to that room and the officers will pick up the slips and bring them up and we will call them in.
Thank you for the clarity, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Council, is there a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Appears to be none, so all in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First item, please.
Mayor and council, item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a franchise for solid waste collection and transportation services to Action Trucking Company. They have requested a franchise agreement. The company is focused on construction and demolition waste. The franchise provides for a term of one year from its effective date and a franchise fee of seven percent of gross revenues received for service. And according to the city charter, franchise ordinances require readings at three separate council meetings. This is the second reading today. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion on this item, please?
Some move for approval.
Thank you. Is, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Thank you. All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously and that concludes our general business, but we do have a couple of work sessions. If you would like to take us into that, please.
Mayor and council, the first work session is to review and discuss proposed amendments to the city charter. This was requested by the council a number of months ago. There are seventeen articles in the city charter, approximately seventeen pages of text, and then there's an index. The city charter was last brought to the voters back in 2003. So, we have gone through fifteen of the seventeen articles and Article sixteen starts on page forty. This is in your packet. I guess we could get through maybe what the city attorney and I are recommending and then answer any questions you may have. You may have your own thoughts as to what we could possibly amend. The first change, recommended change that is, is on page forty-four, section eleven. Page forty-four, section eleven. It's titled, Persons indebted to the city shall not hold office or employment. This was actually recommended by the city council back in 2003 and the voters rejected it. Therefore, the language is still in here. There's a question as to specifically, as it relates to municipal office holders such as the mayor and council position. The city attorney could, could speak to maybe the, maybe it being unconstitutional to have this type of requirement in there. So, that's why we're recommending that it come out.
Actually, it was brought to the citizens for a charter change in nineteen ninety-eight. It's okay. Both Article three, section three, which deals with council qualifications, as well as Article seventeen, section two, which, section eleven, I'm sorry, section eleven, which is what we're talking about here today, persons indebted to the city shall not hold office. The courts have held that an impediment to office holding to be unconstitutional. And I think we addressed that back when we addressed the council qualifications in Article three, and this provision is basically the same. What happened in ninety-eight is both of these were put on to repeal. The repeal failed, so they remained in the charter. And in 2003, which was the next charter change election, they weren't addressed at all. So, we recommend that they would come out again.
But the citizens have to vote on everything anyway.
They'd have to decide. Right.
Question?
To the city attorney?
Yes. What is the court case that holds the constitutionality of these type of...
It's the city of Hunt versus the city of Longview. It's eastern district of Texas and it was affirmed by the Fifth Circuit.
Thank you.
Then there's a, if you'll go to page forty-six. The last sentence, it's just a typo. And shall it, it says be, shall, we think, and shall it by resolution?
Which, which section?
I'm sorry. It's the last sentence on page forty-six.
Oh, okay. I see. Okay. All right.
We can move forward in any manner you'd like to, what we did back in 2003. So, we've gone through seven, all seventeen articles.
I have one more change.
Okay.
It's, it's a typo, just like the last one.
At page forty-five, section seventeen, two lines from the bottom of that section where it says Article fourteen, section fourteen. It should be Article sixteen, section four, that deals with the sale of public utilities. The typo.
No. So, you have all seventeen now. What we did in the past and it worked well. We, we moved through them. The council did, you know, three or four at a time, five, six, seven, eight. You, you probably need to go through page by page. We would go through page by page together. And then if there's an agreement, consensus amongst the council that, hey, we want to place this on the ballot in May of twenty-twenty-one, you would do that. And then if there's a lot of discussion, I've seen the council vote on it. Let's vote. You have to vote on the entire package to place it on the ballot in May of next year. I've seen the council also, you know, you go through it, yeah, it's clerical, let's put that on there. That's, that's easy. Then the council, if you're, if there's a conflict on a proposal or one of you want to change something at any time, you may have to vote on it. Otherwise, we could say, okay, here's the seventeen articles. Do you want to, at the end, you probably want to vote on placing all of those items, whether there's fifteen or thirty on the ballot. And the council has to take that step, place it on the ballot for that May election. So...
I would suggest that we, since, so every, what's in front of us now is all seventeen chapters and the changes that we've gone through in this public meeting today and in the past are marked on, on there. And then the council can have some time, whatever y'all think is appropriate, to review it, to see if there's any additional changes you would like to make or questions along with the ones as opposed, as presented, and then we can go through and talk about each one before we vote.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how long do y'all, yes, go ahead. How long do y'all think you'd like to have to do this? But, I was, I was, I'm asking the question, but if you're...
I'm ready to go next week on it.
Okay.
I've reviewed in detail. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up real quick.
Okay. You want to go ahead now?
I can.
Yeah.
When's the deadline that this needs to be submitted to put it on the ballot for twenty-twenty-one?
Whenever the city clerk would place items on the ballot, whether it be individual names running for office, I would assume.
So, Februaryish?
It would be good to have it probably by the end of January so that everybody, it's been voted upon. And then when I get ready to submit that information to the county clerk so that they can prepare the ballot, we'll have that information.
Okay. One other question I have. Article three, section two, page eight, talks about really the city council itself. One of the things I'd like to do is have a discussion on the possibility of term limits and staggered terms for council. As in any business, I think it can be dangerous if you don't have staggered terms, if there is a complete turnover. So, I think that's helpful for the, for the entity itself, but more importantly, I'd like to have a discussion on term limits.
If I could, if I could just for historical reasons, and it doesn't mean it's not different now, but we were staggered at one time and the citizens voted to put us all at one time, said because it was cost, more cost-effective, but I don't know. But that made one group of us, which was me, at that time, Mayor Lord and Andrew Coconos had a one, one-year term. So, we would have to do that again if we did it. I was in favor at one time of going to three-year term, I mean, three-year terms or four-year terms, but you have to have term limits to do that. So, my suggestion would be, and I'm open for thought, if we were to do that, that we also put in there a different term, because if you're gonna do term limits and you've got two-year terms, I don't even know. There was some state statute that I remember that if you went to three-year terms, you had to have limits or you had to have at, at-large seats one and two. There was a bunch of different information on that.
Well, there are a lot of things when you go from a two-year to a three-year term, but the one that's more, the one that more readily comes to my mind is, is if you have a two-year term, and let's just use Jamie Smith as an example, or Nancy Bowe. If you have a two-year term, they were able to run for a different office and not give up that council seat. If you go to a three-year term and there's more than one year left on that term, you have to vacate that seat.
That's a good point. I didn't know that part.
That's what happened to Derek Freeman, I believe.
No, he lost.
No. He had to step down in Port Arthur when he didn't...
The mayor of Port Arthur?
No, he lost.
He lost.
He lost the election.
Go back a little history.
Well, I didn't know him back then.
Yeah. Well, he was on city council and the word got out he was gonna run for mayor.
There was somebody, yeah, there was somebody, but I didn't remember it was him.
And he had to step down as a city council member because there was more than a year left. So, it's exactly what you were saying. I mean, and it's just around the corner.
So, I support three-year terms, term limits, and staggered terms. That's, that's my thoughts on it.
And Mayor, for the sake of the citizens, could you qualify staggered terms in both cases, historical and what you're calling for?
Well, historical, it was where at-large and the mayor ran in even years.
Okay.
And the four ward members ran in odd years. So, we had a, an election every year. And, I mean, I'm not opposed to term limits. I'm not opposed to the three-year terms. To me, the staggered terms, if, if, my opinion, if, if we do all something bad enough to get voted out all at the same time, we probably need to go. I mean, that's tough to get seven incumbents out at one time. And, I mean, that's how I've always looked at it. That would have to be pretty terrible. But, because the staggered terms at three years, I don't really know how that would work. Our, what we did before when it was two-year terms, it was just like this. And so that, when, when the citizens voted to, to make us, and it was on the charter, to, to have us all run at the same time, the ones that were up in two thousand, which would have been the mayor and the two-at-large members, had one, one-year term. That's why my, my terms are odd numbers and not even numbers, even though I have two-year terms, because I had one, one-year term. And the other ones that were like that were Mayor Lord and Andrew Coconos at the time. So, just, I, I'm not totally opposed. I'm just, I don't know how, how do they do, have you, do we know how other cities do staggered terms if they have three-year terms?
I've not looked at it, ma'am.
Okay. Would have to look at it, but, because it was pretty simple before.
And Mayor, if I may add, another reason for our office, for the city clerk's office, we were having to have elections every year and it did cost the city a lot of money to have one every year. And when we had to do elections by ourselves, it cost us even more money. So, it is beneficial for us to have everybody run together and have it every two years. It does save the city and the taxpayers a lot of money doing it, that we're going that route.
Tell them about how much money we're talking, didn't, when, wasn't it about fifty thousand when the mayor was the only one that drew an opponent a few years ago?
No, it was over a hundred thousand when we had to do it by ourselves and especially when the, when the school board was taking over and we didn't have that split with them, because we do split with two other entities, school district and the port. So, when we have to do those staggered terms and they may not have staggered terms, then we are in an election by ourselves and so that we don't have that split. So...
A hundred thousand?
Yeah, we've spent over a hundred. And we have to run by ourselves.
Because it was by ourselves. If, it just depends on how the other ones fall.
Exactly.
With the school district, things that happened, we, you know, it was different. So, that was the reason for that, because we were the only ones that year that port didn't have anybody and school district didn't have anybody.
Also, with regard to voter participation, we struggle now, even with all seven of us running at the same time, to get ten to fifteen percent voter participation. Could you compare how voter participation would, would match up with just a few people on the ballot as opposed to all seven? Or do you have any recollection of that?
I don't have any recollection. I think that the numbers would probably be maybe lower because we're having staggered terms with maybe three people on the ballot, with the mayor and that large, excuse me, and then we would have the, the ward members on the following year. So, I think our numbers would probably be a lot lower if we had them, had you guys run staggered instead of all together.
That was one of the determinations in that as well. It wasn't just the money. It was also voter participation, if I remember correctly.
And Mayor, what was the downside to, to a three-year term?
Well, at that time, well, we put it on the ballot. We wanted to do it, but the citizens voted it down.
Right. That was in two thousand and three, I think.
That was in, yeah.
When was that?
Two thousand and three. I just looked at it today.
So, three was when, I thought it was two thousand that we went to the staggered, the non-staggered terms.
I was looking at two thousand and three's charter amendments on today and we did have that included with the three-year term and it was voted down by the citizens.
So, that, because the three-year term and the, and the non-staggered was in the same election. I might just have my, I just know I was in it for a one year, so, I mean, but, yeah, so, yeah.
And weren't there also term limits on that ballot?
I don't, I don't know that there was. I don't think we had term limits ever. There's never been term limits.
It was just from a two-year to a three-year.
To a three-year, correct. No term limits.
At some point, did, wasn't there an elect, uh, it placed on the ballot for term limits?
I don't recall.
Maybe a long time ago. I think we talked about that when you and I were first, I mean, when I was first on. I think that they had had that before I was on, but that's been a while, a long time. But does, but you can't do term limits with two-year terms, if I remember. Is that right?
I think you can.
I think you can.
Okay. I, I just remember the three-year term meaning something. One thing is like what you said is about if you want to run for something else, but there was also, I believe, two, I was at-large at that time, so I believe it was the seats, that you could name them seats one and two. Like, right now, it's the top two vote-getters regardless of majority. And if we had gone to the three-year terms that the citizens voted down, we would have had seats one and two. That's, and so, like, the large members wouldn't be all on the same ballot. It would, if someone wanted to run, they had to choose seat one or seat two. That was if we went to three-year terms. I was in favor of that, but it, it did not pass.
Was there any other downside to it on our part as far as, I understand the staggered years, that there's some, there's a negative side to that, but is there a negative side to the three-year term?
Well...
Or, or did the citizens vote against it simply because they didn't want to see us holding three-year terms? I mean, there was no other...
It was, yeah, it was, and it was, I don't remember being close at all.
It wasn't.
I think they just felt like if you're not gonna have term limits, you might, if you have a two-year term, it's only two years and you can vote it out if you do something they don't want.
Well, I just wonder if the citizens fully understand how hard it is to run and you, about the time you're getting, in my case, of being new, you know, I've been on here for a year now. You're just now getting settled into your seat. And now I'm looking at having to start gearing up for the next election this fall, because January, you're gonna start campaigning. And so, January to May, you're campaigning. So, how long do you really govern in a two-year term? I mean, I know you do both and I'm not, I understand that, but I just wonder if the citizens understand the amount of money it costs and the work that goes into it. It just seems like a three-year term would be something to consider if the citizens really understood the dynamic of what it takes to get elected.
Somebody that's run fourteen times?
I mean, I know you get it, but I'm saying that for the sake of the citizens, I just wonder if they fully understand the amount of money it takes and the amount of work it takes to actually get elected to only serve twenty-four months, because it's, it's, there's a lot.
I remember it being not a close race.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that was in, I guess...
But that was seventeen years ago, too.
Yeah.
But it also didn't have term limits either. I mean, it was just extending the term from two years to three years. And, Port Arthur, our friends down south, they have three-year terms and term limits. Yeah.
So, can we put these three items up on there to be voted on by council to see if we have support moving forward on it?
That's what we'll have to do if we don't agree. And there are, and there was just a bunch of separate, separate issues and I think we need to research a little bit to see if there's any other things stipulating that we might not know about, because I'm sure that the laws have changed since then.
Do this for me. Oh, you're looking at a three-year term and how many limits? How many term limits?
I definitely support the, the term limits. I won't buy in from council to know the number of terms. I don't know.
What's Port Arthur got, do you know? Two?
Two.
Two, three-year.
We keep talking about three-year with term limits. We, but we, to clear the air, they don't have to be.
No.
And I'm not speaking in favor of a term limit or not. The only thing I would say is just remember, we do have term limits. It's called elections. And, and people get to choose every time now.
That's why I was wondering why this is a big deal.
And there is, and there is an argument for institutional memory. You know, I do look to the council members that have been here for a long time. I look to them for the historical content they have. So, it's just something to think about. I'm not speaking for or against, but just remember, we do have term limits now, if that doesn't pass, because we have elections.
Exactly. And there's something to be said for that. I mean, when you have a natural disaster, I'm gonna tell you, it makes a big difference when you have staff and council members that have been here for a while that understand it, because it's not... But...
And natural disasters are not necessarily in tune with whenever the elections are held. I mean, they can happen anytime.
Exactly, yeah.
Shifting subjects just briefly for a second. On page twenty-two, and this might be in the realm of a typo. Actually, it's a font change that looks kind of strange down there at the bottom. Is that something that was done, like, right? Can we just clean that up somehow or what happened there?
You know, we, we're trying to figure out why I put it out like that.
It's not that way in the print book.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you can read it, it won't look like that.
It's, okay.
And, ma'am?
Sure.
I'll just, since I've probably, I've been here longer than anyone else. I, too, believe that each time we come up for election, that's a term limit. I also believe that two-year terms, a person coming in new may think they understand what being a council member is all about, but it takes a long time to truly understand the full dynamics. And, and there's a difference between that large seats and the ward seats. And, so, I believe, either way, it doesn't matter personally to me, because it's gonna be up to the voters to make that determination. But from my experience and what I've seen, term limits could push someone out that could be vital to the continuing success of a council. But at the same time, someone could be, that remains there, could be detrimental to the growth of the community. So, with that, I believe that let the people speak. But I do believe that every time we go to an election, that's an opportunity for the voters. If they feel we've not done our responsibilities, they can remove us.
And just to tag onto that a little bit, city attorney said that for Port Arthur, for instance, they're one of our neighbors and they have three-year terms, but they have two, I think, a two, two-term limit?
Two, three-year term.
So, six years is not very long to learn what you need to learn. I'm sorry, it's just not.
So, what I'm saying is, I, I do support, I believe it would be in the best interest of the, of the city to have three-year terms, but I do believe that term limits could be detrimental to the citizens at some point. So, I don't support the term limits, but I do support the three-year.
And, and term limits kind of goes in line with staggering years, because the whole premise behind staggering years is so everyone doesn't go at the same time that has experience and you could get everyone out at the same time. But for that to happen would be very odd, but let's just say it did. That really kind of falls in the same line of term limits, because you get, could get rid of some, you know...
Well, I do support the staggered elections.
With the three-year, it would be a lot better, because it wouldn't be every single year.
Correct.
And I don't know how that would work, but...
Well, I think we look around, you know, we've got some elected officials that are there for four, some for two, senators for six. I mean, basically, it just boils down to what the citizens thinks the best for Beaumont, Texas. And I think our discussion to talk about it and say, look, give us some feedback. Tell us what you think. Because as Councilman Samuel said, you know, term limits come up every time there's a vote. And looking around, there are people here today that weren't here six years ago. Uh, and looking around, there are people here today that weren't here six years ago.
A few.
You know.
A couple. A couple, maybe, yeah. So, um, what, what suggestion would you make to how to, what were you going to say?
No, you, you say what I was going, I was just going to clarify that if you go to a two, three-year terms, at the end of your first three-year terms, you could be ousted. So you're not guaranteed your six years, I think is what you're saying, that, you know, you're, you're term limited every time you come up for election.
Yeah.
Uh, but my question to you, what do you want me or Kyle and I to bring back to you for you to consider before we start talking, putting things on the ballot in terms of the term limit?
I can shoot an email to you with my request.
Okay.
And what we can do is, um, but I think they also need to know if there's a majority of council that disagrees with the, no, the administration's recommendations as before us, because if there, I mean, even though we're talking about specific things y'all, or somebody, anybody might want to add or take away, we also need to give direction, and if there's, we need to look through and see where all the markings are, and if there's four council members that don't like what the administration recommend, we need to let them know that, too, because that will have to come off.
I, I would let the city attorney do a little research as, maybe as it relates to what Port Arthur's, how that, that's structured, give you that.
I don't think your suggestion's six years, though.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to copy Port Arthur.
You, we're just making a statement about it, but we need to define what that would be at some point.
I'll do a little more research and send you an email on that.
And then we can, when, when we bring it back for council to discuss, we can discuss it again. We don't necessarily have to vote it. We could vote the following week after we talk about it. Because I'm not saying I'm opposed to any of it. I just want to hear the details.
Okay.
I'd say there's not a big rush right now. We can bring it back any week you want it. At the same time, there's, there's a lot that's going to be before you in the next thirty days. So, I don't know what the rush is on the charter. Again, you're not going to place on the ballot until by February, or let's say January. Uh, what, what you're going to need to do, though, is probably go page by page. We line through what we're proposing to take out.
Make sure.
We're highlighting what we're proposing to put in, new language, and you would actually, basically, if you don't vote, we'd know if there was an agreement among, amongst the seven of you to place that item on the ballot. And once we know that, then you'll vote to place this entire amended charter on the ballot. And it's spelled out, one item at a time.
Yeah.
It's the way that we're required to do it. So the voters have an option to go through and vote on every single one.
Individually?
Yep.
Yeah, individually.
They're individual.
Last time, there were how many? In two thousand and three?
Uh, seven.
It wasn't a lot.
Not anymore. I think there were more than that.
The two thousand and five, it's like.
We've done it twice since I've been on.
Twelve.
Nineteen.
Gee, they could fall asleep.
And some of them could be typos. Um, okay. So, council, you want to, I mean, you had mentioned a week, but, I mean, that's not very long. If, does anybody disagree with that?
Well, it's not long if he, let's see what his email says. It may take the city attorney, it'll take a little time to do the proper research.
So we'll leave it open for right now about when it's going to come back. We can talk about it again next week? Like when we'll bring it back?
I'd like to see what his email says, and then the city attorney can gauge, yeah, I can answer all those questions in one week, or maybe a couple of weeks.
But, and, and define what you're talking about, if I'm.
I will.
Is there any other, uh, council members that want to add anything to this at this point? It's not the last time, obviously, um, but at this point. Okay. So we'll move to the next item, please.
Okay. Mayor and council, the second work session is to review and discuss, uh, possible fencing around the botanical gardens at Terrell Park. And Keith Folsom, who's over all of our facilities, will come forward.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Okay. If you'll notice, I put some handouts on y'all's, uh, stations there.
Oh, yes.
And what I tried to do on the pictures you see there, and I noted it, the fixed knot fencing, that's the fencing that we're proposing, not exactly like that. We're talking about using T-post, and I do have a drawing in there that kind of shows you a little bit better of diagrammatic of what we're using for the ornamental fencing and the fixed knot fencing. But, uh, you also see the hog panel fencing, which hog panel fencing is a thirty-four-inch by sixteen-foot panel, different style of fence. Uh, but what we're proposing is a fixed knot fence.
So, the middle one or the bottom one?
The, uh, fixed knot fencing, which is, this one is the one we're proposing, that style of fabric.
Keith?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, the knots, do they just?
They're, they're fixed. Yeah, they're, they're smooth, but they're fixed, and it, they're not, they're not, they're not like a hinged type effect like some of the other fabric is. So it's a little more stable, and it, yeah, and it provides a, a memory of, you know, if a hog or a predator hits into it, it, it bounces back, basically. It doesn't stay caved in. And with the fixed knot, it does allow or prevent the hogs from getting in to the holes there and try to waller out a hole and get in it. So it's a lot stronger. It's a high tensile strength fence, so. But as you know, you know, y'all rejected the bids on the, uh, chain link fencing. We came back with this fixed knot fencing, which is overall a little bit cheaper than the chain link fencing. I did consult with the U.S. Department of Agricultural, Eddie Davis, that was, the gentleman that was down here trapping the hogs for us. Uh, he did recommend this type of fencing. Uh, you know, the post spacings would be on twelve-foot centers. So he collaborated with us, and he agrees that this, this is our best option going forward with this. This type fence here, I don't plan on putting the concrete apron underneath it. Uh, we will have a strand of barbed wire on the bottom, which will help prevent them, hopefully, from trying to root underneath it and grab the fence. I do have an option in there to put a, a low-grade hog barrier in there, but we're looking at a cost of about ten grand to do that. And in talking with Eddie Davis, uh, he doesn't really think we would, would have to have that, because what he's telling me is the hogs with much area and territory they have around this, they're not going to be dying to get into this garden area. So they're going to kind of come upon this barrier, hit it, and try to, they'll travel down it, see if they can find a spot in it. If they don't, he said they're probably going to migrate on, find them a better spot. So I wouldn't recommend that part of it in this package, but what I did was I included it as an alternate in our bid package, so you will be able to look at that, and it'll be up to y'all to decide. Uh, the fixed knot fencing, I consulted with a local fence contractor, and we're looking at about sixteen hundred and forty-three millennial feet at a cost, a budget estimate now, about nineteen thousand two-ten. That's just for the fixed knot around the back perimeter of the property. Ornamental fence across the front, which will give us a more decorative look and secure the property, we're looking at about forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And then I will include a concrete apron underneath that ornamental fence, so they won't root underneath that, and that's an additional cost of seven thousand three fifty. So if we do the three items on the top, we're looking at an estimated budget amount of sixty-nine-five. And then, depending on what the cost comes in, I've got a budget on that hog barrier, which is an additional ten thousand. So if we did everything, we're looking at about seventy-nine-five.
But without the barrier, it'd be sixty-nine-five.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yes, please, go ahead.
You mentioned the barrier. I understand, you know, not putting a concrete footing, but just to go down with the hog fencing, you said it's ten thousand?
Yeah, the trench it and.
The trench it and bury that down?
And bury, bury about a fourteen, sixteen-inch piece of the hog panel is what I'm proposing for that.
But this sixteen hundred feet?
Yeah.
That's a long way.
And then you're, you're, you're going to use T-post, correct?
That's correct.
And you're, you're going down two feet?
Uh, I think I'm going down about three feet on those. I'm going, and what we're doing, yeah, we'll have T-post every ten foot, and then about every sixty foot, we'll have what they call a wooden boss post, a little bit stronger. And then at every intersecting point where we change direction in the fence, we'll have, um, you know, H-style bracing to, to be able to enhance our pull points on it. But something I want to point out, too, on this fixed knot fencing, it comes in three hundred and thirty-foot rolls, so you won't have a joint but every three hundred and thirty feet. If you go with the hog panel, you're looking at sixteen-foot sections. Every sixteen foot, you're going to have a joint. In my opinion, more joint you have, the weaker the fence, so you're going to have to spend a little bit more time and money bracing that up, so.
And I understand at the bottom, you're talking, put on a piece of barbed wire, but, or, or, I, I know you have no way of knowing until we actually probably do this, but you feel confident that they will not try to root underneath it?
Yeah, and I think just, in talking with Eddie Davis with USDA, he's, like he said, they're, they're not going to be dying. We're not trapping them outside. They're going to come upon this, and he don't feel like there's that much food inside that they're going to want to try to tear the fence down to get in. Now, if you get them inside and trap them, yeah, they're trying to get out, and they're going to try to destroy that fence.
But they have other space.
Yeah, he's thinking, we got so much other space, and we don't want to push them on a golf course, but they have a lot of other space to, to go, uh, root and grub.
I've just, I ask that only because, as I've mentioned to you before, on our dear lease, we just had very bad luck with feral hogs. They're very aggressive.
Yeah.
And very creative, and they could tear up just about anything you put out there, so I have a bad attitude towards feral hogs.
Well, that was my next question. What if they go around the fencing that's there, and then they're routed, they go some other direction, and we have another problem?
Yeah, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to address that. That's, that's something we'll have to come back and see how we're going to address it. The USDA group, you know, they finished up their little tour the first of June. Uh, they trapped about a hundred and ninety at the landfill. And between Cattle Marsh and Terrell Park, you know, they trapped about forty-five. So the majority of our problem is at the landfill. So I don't know if they're migrating from that point, but that's just a drop in the bucket. I mean, they're going to multiply, so we're going to have to, it's going to be a continual fight.
Councilman Gitts?
That's what I was going to ask you, if you had spoken to Eddie about how many he had trapped, and if he made any recommendations, whether or not it would be in the best interest of the city to continue to have a, a trapper out there. I know that some cities have contracted with private services in order to have trappers, and it's very expensive if you do that. But I'm also under the belief that you could contract with the USDA directly, and they can provide a trapper at a substantially reduced amount of money. Is that something that y'all have talked about at all?
Yeah, Eddie had, Eddie had mentioned that to me, and I have not reached out to his boss and, and got any information on that. But that was one option. Another option, he said that we could basically set up our own traps like he done, and monitor them and take care of the issue ourselves, just like he's been doing. We do that in-house. I mean, that's an option that we'll bring back to the manager and.
It's a sport.
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to do something. It's ongoing, but to protect the garden center, I think the fence is going to be needed. I don't think we can get around that.
I agree.
So.
Any other questions, council?
So, uh, between the fence and trapping, which I understand you're going to research that more, uh, you're going to come back to us, but i, in your opinion, between the trapping and the fencing, this would be the way for us to manage this problem we're having?
Yes, I think that's the only way we're going to be able to do it. I mean, we can't fence everything off, uh, so we're still going to have a problem at the landfill. We're still going to have a problem at the golf course. Golf course does, I think, treat their fairways and stuff with some, uh, insecticide, pesticide, or something that try to kills the grub worms to try to keep them off of the fairways and everything, but when you get off of that, I mean, they still have area to tear up, so.
What's the issue we have at the landfill with them being there?
Just the number of them.
I mean, but I mean, is it what?
Not detrimental to anything, I guess, but.
What are they damaging? Do we care?
No, not really. I don't, unless Benji has it. But I think what, what we feel like, that's their food source, and they're going to go there, and then the more they multiply from that point, then they're going to migrate over to the golf course and everything.
So is there consensus of council to bring this back for a vote, um, or do we need that?
No, ma'am, you just, we're just looking for agreement to move forward, go out for bids.
Okay.
And then when we get the bids back, we bring them to you.
Okay.
Now, I have the, yeah, and I have the specifications and drawings are ready to go. I'm just waiting on the.
Oh, because we have to approve an RFP? Okay.
Yeah, well, we had, we'll have to go through the bid process formally.
Okay.
So.
All right. Okay, everybody? All right. Thank you so much. And I believe that concludes our work session. So before we move to public comment, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one of the government code, Kendrick Williams versus City of Beaumont et al., cause numbered A dash two-zero-four, comma, five-zero-eight, Southern Choice Consulting LLC versus City of Beaumont, cause number A dash two-zero-five, comma, five-three-three, and claim of Mobile, uh, Exxon-Mobil Oil Corporation versus City of Beaumont. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today, now's the time to do so. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip, let the officer know that you would like to speak. We will hand it to, or one of the officers will hand it to the city clerk, and she will call out your name. As I mentioned earlier, we appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Jason Marshburn, ten-seventy Monterey Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
How are y'all today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, last time, last week, I was talking about life, liberty, and property, so those are the things that we have a social contract to respect each other's right to life, liberty, and property. You know, most people know what life is. We can debate about that, and the most people don't know what property is. We can kind of debate about that, but a lot of people don't understand what liberty is. And, you know, John Stuart Mill had wrote, "The only purpose for which power can be exercised against a will is to prevent harm to others." So that's his harm principle. So, and then the other part is, uh, that his own good isn't sufficient warrant to have a law. So basically, if harm is yourself, there's no law against that, so. But if you harm somebody else, you know, obviously, there's a law to protect other people. And of course, that was a big issue this year, um, and that's a debate between safety and liberty. You know, we've been through this COVID stuff, so, you know, should we close businesses down, you know, harm people's livelihoods, or do we protect the public health? And that's a disagreement we have in this society right now. And the same thing with the, uh, police issue, so obviously, we want police, everybody to trust the police, right? And everybody should get, get service from police, but there's another group that's kind of worried about the broken windows, which is, um, it's a theory like J.M. Q. Wilson that's used. So if there's a broken window in a neighborhood, that's, you know, you see that, little things like that, uh, that invites bigger crime. And then it comes like when I said the state of nature, you know, Lord of Flies, where you start getting more and more, uh, into that state of nature where everybody's got to look over the back. So that, you know, that hurts people's liberties, so, you know, especially the vulnerable people in society. So if you're an older elderly person, and you see a lot of crime, you're not going to go shopping. I mean, a lot of people afraid to go to a party at a mall by themselves or one of these other places because of the crime rate. I don't think it's really deserved that we have a high crime rate in the media. I don't agree with the way their methodology is, but, you know, it is what it is. People have their mind that we got a lot of crime. And so we need to be mindful, like, we need, the, at least the police are working together, make sure these, uh, people, everybody trusts the police. Uh, and these broken windows don't ever happen. Now, all are, you know, are vulnerable, and citizens are, feel like they're protected, they're not, you know, not afraid to come into town, and, you know. A lot of people are scared with the talk about a lot of these cities are disavowing the police department. And it's been kind of like, you know, I guess demagogued a little bit in one way or the other. I mean, Dean, you know, at least we're doing the right thing, I think. Community policing, if everybody just kind of trusts everybody, everybody realizes that everybody is valuable. And, you know, no, no, no liberty is, will be harmed if everybody just kind of respects each other's, you know, life and property and, and where they want to live life, you know what I'm saying? How they wish to do it. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshburn.
That's all I have, Mayor.
There's no other citizen that was just to speak today? No? Okay. Wow. All right, I will move to council member comments, and I'll start on the other side today. How about you, uh, Councilmember Mutron?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce, uh, today until four P.M., there is a free walk-up COVID testing at Alice Keith Park, forty-fifty Reed Street. Again, it's free. You just walk up, and it's open until four P.M. today. Also, um, we. Also, we received literature from Labor's for the Harvest, James and Tanner. I just want to thank you for sending that literature out and encouraging all of the council, and also just giving us guidance as to letting us know that God is always in control. Also, I'd like to give condolences to the family and friends of Kathy Hunter Lee. She passed on this Saturday, and last Saturday, she had a, they asked the city for a resolution for the work that she has been involved in with breast cancer. And so there was a parade of her friends and her family on Saturday before last, and she passed this Saturday, so condolences to her family and all of her friends. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Samuel.
Mayor, I would simply reiterate what council member Muton mentioned, there's free testing. Some people might have been like me, always wanted to know, but I had heard about how uncomfortable it was, the test. And I did go, and I didn't have to have anybody hold my hand, but I did get the test, and it has brought about a great deal of relief to at least know that I've gone through the process, and I understand how others may have felt. But these, those that are there administering the test, very competent and very accountable. Well, they're very good.
That was today at Alice Keith?
Yes, that was this morning at Alice Keith.
That's the state.
And it's free of charge.
Yep.
All you have to do is have some type of identification, no fee, just identification. And they'll, it took me ten minutes. There was no line, went straight up, they gave me the information, took my information, and had the test, and I think it's twenty-four to forty-eight hours, they should have the response.
I'm sorry, you said it was not painful?
No, it wasn't. It was un, and I didn't understand the difference between uncomfortable and painful, because I recall a flu test one time, and it was painful, and this was not painful, it was just very uncomfortable.
Very.
You had a soft touch.
But it still need to be tested. Pardon? I say, but still get the test.
Still go test, get your test.
And then if you start feeling bad after it, you might need to get tested again. Because you, I'm just saying, just because you kind of, if you get negative back in about a week or two, if you have symptoms, I'm sorry to tell you this, but-
Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. All right. All right. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor. We want to encourage everybody that wants to, because that was one of, as you recall, when we first started, everybody was concerned about how much it's going to cost. In this case, as council member Samuel said, it was between painful and uncomfortable, but we'd encourage everybody that feels that they need to, to get on down there. Also, I'd like to mention, recently, we lost somebody who had been really involved in our community, that was Bessie Chisholm. She was really involved in leadership, Southeast Texas, leadership Beaumont, and she had recently lost her husband Stuart, and they'd been married for quite a long time. I think sometimes we forget that when, when couples have been married forty-five or fifty years, when one of them passes away, there's about a fifty percent chance that the other one will pass away within the next year. That's just how it is. And so I would encourage you, if individuals that are friends of yours experience that, to do, to get with the other one, because you can make a difference in their life as far as trying to encourage them to keep going, because the loss of a life partner is really something, and it takes an effort on everybody's part. In the meantime, as we continue to move forward, we'll just ask you to keep us all on your prayer list. It does make a difference. We're up here trying to do the best we can. If we all had the wisdom of God, we'd never make any mistakes, but unfortunately, we don't, but prayers do make a difference, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member, council member Felschall.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the death of George Floyd on May the twenty-fifth, I've been, as many of you, very distracted with that tragedy. I have found myself getting a little sloppy when it comes to the guidelines put out by the CDC and safe distancing. So just a word of encouragement, as we are trying to reopen, as there is more testing, I know numbers are going up, but I, I stand corrected in the fact that I, I have to be careful, I have to focus. I understand, as being the pastor of a local church with multiple staff, multiple ministries, and multiple congregants, you know, I'm challenged, as everyone is, but I just, word of encouragement, as we move forward, please let us be safe and responsible, because as I mentioned, I've been distracted lately, and I catch myself not doing the things that I wa, that I were doing, you know, before May the twenty-fifth, and I'm trying to get back to being disciplined, and just want to encourage everybody to remember that. Number two, Sunday, there was a panel discussion at Suggas in regards to the present state of affairs here in America, the crisis that we're in right now, with the protesting and law enforcement and so forth, and there were politicians there, there were preachers there, there was police there, citizens there, and I just want to say to the citizens that there was good dialogue, and I know that everyone is anxious to see change and to see us move forward. I just wanted to give you an encouraging word that we are talking, we are talking, and that's important. Dialogue is taking place, and it was open and honest, and we have work to do, but just please know that your leaders are sincerely trying to move forward in a way that's good and right for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, councilmember Gibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to announce that this evening, there will be a virtual meeting of the Dallin West Neighborhood Association, and the way you can access that meeting is to call in at seven o'clock. The phone number is eight-eight-eight-four-seven-five-four-four-nine-nine. They're going to ask you for a passcode, and it will be four-seven-zero-nine-six-three-two-one-eight if you want to participate in that meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thanks to the city manager and city attorney and staff for working through these charter changes with us, trying to get these things updated since, what, two-thousand-and-three was the last time y'all did it? Next thing, streets and drainage and water and sewer, I know the city manager's office is tracking the citizens that are calling in with complaints right now. As you get this database built here in the next couple of weeks, I would like to see if you couldn't share some of that information with council, just as what we're finding, what the complaints are, how long it's taking to get these repairs made, and seeing if there's anything from a council standpoint we can do to help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
No, ma'am.
You had something else? Okay. Yes, go ahead. No? Okay. Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry. This Friday, there will be a Juneteenth rally at six-thirty MLK Park on College Street. Thank you.
Yep, okay. So just a quick announcement about COVID-nineteen, because I did get some calls. People look at the top of an update but don't read all the way to the bottom. As of last week, we brought our EOC to a level three, which means that everyone is not working all the way through the weekend as we have been since March twelfth. So with that said, the update that I put out every day around four to four-thirty on today, yesterday, sorry, Monday, included Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. We will continue to put one out Monday through Friday, but Monday will, will include Saturday and Sunday, and as I knew might happen, even though we tried to put it everywhere, post it everywhere, I got some calls yesterday from the media, and it was reported incorrectly, but then it was fixed, that, because the twenty-seven, twenty-seven cases that we had were over Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, they weren't just for Monday. But I also want to reiterate, as I've talked to the media, some, they're trying to say, well, you know, there's so much in one day, but please keep in mind that there are so many places now that are testing. I mean, so many, and they all send their, their collections to different labs that actually run the test. Some labs take twenty-four hours, some labs take two days, some take three, some take four, so you and I might have gotten tested on the same day, but our results aren't going to come back on the same day, not necessarily. So what that means is, is what you see each day might not be actually each day. It's very hard to take a scientific look at that data, because there are so many places testing, and there are so many labs. If you remember in the very beginning, when all this started, there was talk about not enough test kits. First of all, we never turned anyone away, but secondly, the issue was more about the labs that could run the test. At the time that this all started, the only place that could run a test after a swab was taken was the CDC in Atlanta. In fact, Officer Riley had to drive our first one to the airport to fly to Atlanta. And after that, it started opening more and more and more. There was more in Texas, and now there's even some here, and even in Beaumont. So with that said, there are so many different labs, as the council member said, the uncomfortable one over here, Alice Keith is free, but really, for the most part, even some of the clinics are no charge to the individual. If you have insurance, they will take your card, but they're not going to charge you a copay. If you have no ability to pay, they will not ask you to pay, because the CARE Act is actually paying Medicare, Medicaid. But if you're going to go to a private clinic, like, you know, we've talked about the one on Dallin, we partnered with them, AFC, and just call them first and make sure, but they are taking people, too. I've sent several people there. But then again, addition to the one that the state is doing over at Alice Keith Park today, I think Antioch Church is actually doing one today as well, and tomorrow, Sixteenth and Seventeenth, is that today?
Today's-
Sixteenth and Seventeenth, eight to three. So, and those are free as well. So there's a lot of testing availability, so as was said earlier, please, it, it, it's great if you want to get tested, that you get tested, most of us have, but if you get tested and it's negative, and in a week or so, or three days or four days, you know, you ha, you spike a fever, that, just because you got tested today doesn't mean you're going to be negative forever. You could come in contact with someone. So we just want to be very open about that, and, you know, we, we expect to get more information from the governor today. We are following the governor's guidelines, because he did suspend Chapter four-eighteen that gives cities and counties the ability to put declarations or orders in. So some people think that we still can, as I've been told this like three times today, we could still make them more stringent, just not less. That is not the case. That was the case in the beginning, but now that's not the case, because four-eighteen, which gives the cities and counties that authority, has been suspended for now by the governor. So everyone in the state is under the governor's order, and as he reopens, that's what we're doing, but we want to just remind everyone, we're, you know, we're blessed because we don't have the numbers like they have in Austin or Houston, but we just need to still practice, as you were saying, you don't want to be lax. We want to still practice social distancing and wear our mask and do the things that they're asking us to do. It's very hard, it's hard to talk, it's hard to breathe, but, but just remember that, that this is not over, but the number that you saw on Monday, yesterday, was not for one day, it was for three days. And we, if you look at the chart, which, there's one that's out every day on the second page of the update, and it shows how many we've had each day, and we had some spikes, and then we were pretty low, and then we spiked up again, but I think that we're going to continue to see this for a little while, and as things start to open up, just still be careful. And some people say, well, why are they opening everything? Because I don't want to get sick. You don't have to go. You know, just because something's open, you, if you go to a restaurant and you don't feel comfortable with how they're handling it, don't go in. There's a lot of options out there for worship, for, I mean, Facebook and everything, just do what you feel is right for your body and how you feel, and, and know that there are people who are at risk, but the medical physicians are saying that this plasma therapy is doing wonders for people with underlying conditions, so we're very happy about that, but still, the best way to protect yourself is to use caution. So I encourage everyone to do that as we move forward, and we'll get through it. We are also at the EOC preparing for hurricane season, and it's a difficult thing to think about an evacuation or a shelter when we are in this situation, so just know that we have to have plans to the state, and we just pray and hope that we don't have any type of other disasters, because I think we've had our fill. And then, and as council member Muton said, there is a Juneteenth rally on Friday at MLK Park, which looks beautiful right now, at six-thirty, and everyone come out, because as council member Felschall was saying, we are talking, I talk to different people all day, and I think that that's what the key is, is communication and trust and working together to achieve, achieve a common goal. So that's all I have today, and I did read the, yes, I did, so that is all. So thank y'all so much for coming, and we will now recess into executive session.